Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Village of North Hudson Regular Finance Personnel Committee Meeting. For Tuesday, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one at six thirty P M. This is in place of our April sixth meeting because we have an election that day. Roll call, please.
Trustees Nelson.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustees Ice.
Here.
Okay, minutes, regular finance and personnel committee meeting from two March, two thousand and twenty-one. Your motion to approve. Your second?
Second.
Thanks Kirk, Brian. Any amendments or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, claims and review recommendations.
Stan, could I move to approve the December two thousand and twenty-nine recurring claims of three hundred and forty-four dollars in the March thirtieth, twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one non-recurring claims of sixty-two thousand, twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Thank you Kirk, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Brian.
Melissa, that forty-three thousand's library, right?
Uh, yes, it's the first half of the library contract.
Okay, so that is half, so we're paying basically about eighty-six?
Yep, little over eighty-six thousand.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or outliers? Hearing none, uh, let's go roll call Kirk.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And yes, thank you. Item four, wage for municipal court clerk position, discussion, possible recommendations.
Stan, I move to set the pay wage for the municipal court clerk position at a range between sixteen fifty to seventeen dollars an hour.
Thank you Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Brian, uh, any other discussion, Melissa?
No, thank you Melissa for the job description and I went through it, looks
Yeah.
pretty good.
Okay. And nothing else, I guess it's a spending thing, Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Thank you, everyone. Item five, possible increase to the stormwater E R U charge, discussion and possible recommendations.
Stan, I recommend to increase the E R U rate from seven dollars to nine dollars per E R U to support the two fifteen stormwater utility fund.
Thank you Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Kirk, discussion?
Oh, I watched your meeting Brian, it certainly makes sense, it's been a while since this has been increased and I think it's certainly needed.
We wanna, we wanna address the two fifteen fund next month. Um, wanna look at it in a little more detail, but this is, this is gonna help with, with getting the storms who are done a little quicker, not a lot quicker, but a little quicker.
And you did hold a public hearing at the la- at your last meeting, correct?
Yes, yes sir.
And there was no citizen participation?
No, sir.
Okay, so, uh, uh, I suppose that's a charge, so any further discussion? Hearing none, Kirk?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll make it unanimous, and I guess at six thirty-four, we are adjourned until the meeting at seven. We will see you all shortly. Good evening, everyone, is, uh, this is the Village of North Hudson Regular Board Trustees Meeting on Tuesday, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P M. This is in place of the meeting that would have been on April sixth, that we have an election to during that, so, uh, why am I getting feedback?
Somebody had speaker on, we had to put on mute.
Uh, okay, thanks, yeah. Yeah, I couldn't get along without you tech guys, that's for sure. But anyway, uh, let's see, we'll have a roll call, please.
Trustees Head. Leaf.
Here.
Matts.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustees Ice.
Here.
Thank you, I have a short invocation. Lord, look upon our nation with mercy and forgiveness. We as a people have fallen away from you. Help us, Lord, to return to your eternal truths that have held this nation together for more than two hundred years. Thank you, and, uh, let's see, got the roll call done, uh, item two, review approved minutes for regular board meeting of two March. Is there a motion?
It's all moved.
Thank you Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, is there any corrections, discussions? Where is that feedback coming from? Right here, somebody in the background. No further, or no discussion, uh, will, uh, all in favor, say, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item three is comments from the floors, opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and, uh, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Is there anyone from the audience that has anything to say? Hearing none. We'll move on to item four. Okay, item four is amended, class pair and B slash pair and class B liquor licenses for extended premises. Malu Inn Spring Motorcycle Run, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, with an alternative rain date of April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, approval requested, is there a motion?
Stan, I move to approve with the eight conditions mentioned in the issue statement.
Thank you Brian. Do we need to have those read, chief? The conditions?
Have to check with Paul on that, I'm not sure.
Okay, Paul?
I guess it would be nice to have them read into the record, uh, just so everyone knows that's listening. Or they are, sorry Brian.
Yep. All right, with the eight conditions, number one being sale of alcohol to be extended to the parking lot area of Malu Inn. Number two, possession of open containers of alcohol outside of the establishment shall remain within Malu Inn parking lot and block off street area for event, which is Wisconsin Street North from Third Street North to Sixth Street North. Number three, use of outside area only with specific permission of village board for each particular date and event. The Saturday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-one event to be from ten A M to two P M. Item four, three, North Hudson Police Officers and three St. Croix County deputies to be on duty during the hours of the event at the owner's expense to be billed to the owner by the village. Number five, owner to provide adequate satellite restroom facilities. Number six, Wisconsin Street North from Sixth Street North to Third Street North to be closed to through traffic ten A M to two P M with an open corridor for emergency vehicles maintained. Surrounding neighbors to be notified in advance by the village. Actual time of detour router at the discretion of the commanding N H P D officer on scene. Number seven, payment for village services must be paid within thirty days after the event. Number eight, alternate date for the event to be Saturday, April twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one, if the conditions do not allow for the event to take place on Saturday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you Brian. We had a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Tim, uh, discussion?
They're getting it under the wire for the construction, obviously, so they're getting it before that starts, that's good.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I wanted to mention is I'm kinda concerned with their alternate rain date. On the twenty-fourth. I, I don't, I'm not sure exactly when they're gonna be starting, but if that happens. So I don't know Paul, do we, or what you guys, if that needs to be addressed at all, or?
It's still May first, right Kevin? We haven't heard any updates.
Nothing as of yet, it's been set in stone, so.
Yeah. I just, uh, I, I'm really hoping that they have, uh, some good luck this year, they, they've, I think we've missed about the last three that they've had there, I mean, uh, and, uh, you know, that's a, I know it's a big, uh, it's a big event for them down there, it sets them up for a pretty good part of the year, so, uh, you know, let's keep them in our thoughts that, uh, that they can, uh, it's another North Hudson business, we want to see you succeed, so, uh, hope that works out for them.
Uh, Melissa, one second Stan, going back to Melissa's comment, I think, I don't think, anything's changed at this point either, but I mean, if it does, obviously, we're gonna have to address it when it comes to that point, right? I mean, I don't know if you're gonna add anything to this motion.
Do we need to add subject to highway thirty-five construction, like amending it?
What, what someone's feeling on that, I mean, I, I agree Kathy, um, I don't know Kevin, I don't think it's gonna be, I don't foresee it being moved up, but just, you never know, right?
Yeah. Could be, could not be, it's hard to say at this point.
My guess with the state, it'll be moved back, rather than off.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin nodding.
Or like, yeah, they haven't released the numbers yet of actually what the unit prices were. Uh, I've been watching that on a, almost a daily basis, so that tells me that they're still reviewing the costs, you know, what the contractor submitted, so.
With all that being said, it's an easy adjustment for us to help or add that extra part just in case.
So I'll move to amend the, uh, motion to add the words subject to highway thirty-five construction under item eight.
Second.
Thank you Kirk. Uh, is there any further discussion?
No, I think it's good, thank you.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the amended motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item five is the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two fireworks permit application of Carolyn Whaley of Exit One fireworks approval request.
Stan, I saw a move to approve the application for fireworks paraphernalia license temporary use permit for Carolyn Whaley with the following inclusions, no smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under the age of eighteen in operation not to exceed one hundred and eighty days per calendar year.
Thank you Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Phil, uh, just further discussion? Uh, we've had no issues with them in the past, I don't believe, chief, uh, that's, this is, they've done this now several years at Exit One, yes?
Correct, we have not had any complaints, and I think, uh, this kinda brings them in line with the other application that you heard earlier as far as kind of the breakdown of their dates and doing a little bit, or a lot in the summertime, and then uh, I think up six days, if I remember correctly, uh, towards the end of the year, so, um, nothing spectacular, the only thing that I'll bring to your attention, and Melissa may have, uh, was gonna talk about this, I'm not sure, but um, because of the moving of the meeting and whatnot and the application, it did not go to public safety, but this particular applicant had been through a couple of times through public safety, so nothing has really changed, uh, with the content of the application.
Thank you chief, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the fireworks permitted application Carolyn Whaley for Exit One, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item six, new business from the border staff. Uh, first is president's comments, and, uh, my first comment is I would like to thank Kathy Leaf and Lori Head for their public service and for their hours of commitment to the village. They've chosen not to, uh, uh, join us for any more meetings, at least not in their official capacity for, uh, as trustees and but, and they, they know this job can be, uh, pretty miserable at times with, when you hit some contention. So, uh, I thank them from the bottom of my heart for what they've put into this, and I'd like to, uh, maybe have a round of applause for them, how about that? We can do that on T V. Okay. You're both certainly welcome. Okay, the next thing I've got is, uh, we, we have an election coming up on the sixth, I'm sure Melissa's gonna talk about that, but, uh, I know, uh, there will be some openings on some of the committees for volunteers for the citizens, you don't have to be on the board to be on these, uh, and I will get a list of the openings to Melissa so that she can post them on the website. So any citizens that would like to, uh, uh, check out and see what some of these committees are like, or duties are like, to get into the with, and help with the village, uh, it'd be much appreciated. And finally, uh, I would like to wish everyone a most happy and blessed Easter coming up this weekend, and, uh, and I want to thank everyone again, Melissa?
Uh, yes, the spring election is next Tuesday, April sixth. The last day to request an absentee ballot by mail is this Thursday, April first. And the last day to in-person absentee vote is Friday, April second. And then, of course, the polls are open from seven A M to eight o'clock P M, like usual. And then also, uh, the reorg meeting, um, usually we have this as an approval, um, however, it is to be held the third Tuesday in April. So the date for that, for the reorg meeting will be, uh, Tuesday, April twentieth. Um, and typically, we have a before the public works meeting at five o'clock P M. So if everybody wants to put that on their calendar. And that's all I have.
So, about that twentieth, uh, it is, uh, my hope to, uh, have public works back in to the village board that evening at five thirty, so do we know whether we're gonna go in for the reorg or not at five?
We don't, but I'll send out more information, probably closer to it once we have that determined.
And who would like, who would get selected in the next, uh?
Right.
Right, okay.
Go around.
Yeah, so closer to it, I'll send out more information on that.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, item seven, plant commission recommendations, chair update, uh, Paul, you gonna fill in for Mike?
Sure, I can be glad to. Um, the plant commissioned met, uh, had two major items on, on the agenda. One was a concept review only for a three lot subdivision on Gallohead Road. Um, there was two lots to be created, uh, fronting the street and then a flag lot with a, a larger remnant parcel in the back. Um, the applicant indicated that, you know, they wanted to keep a low density to the area and was not thinking of subdividing the larger lot in the, in the future. Um, plant commission was supportive of the concept and moved it forward, uh, for them to continue on with the process. Uh, the other one was the final plat for the ridges, third edition. Uh, plant commission recommended approval of that. We've also, uh, Kevin and I, Melissa have worked on the development agreement for that. Very similar to the development agreement for the second edition. Uh, we feel that's in final form and would recommend approval of that. Uh, assuming that, you know, the applicant in that case doesn't have any further comments on it.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have that first, uh, that first subdivision on Gallohead, there's no paperwork up here on that yet? Right?
No, it was just a concept that they came in with.
Okay. And so we're really looking at this, uh, third, Derek, right?
Yes.
Three.
Yep, yeah, it completes the project out there, um, the final plat was consistent with the preliminary plat. I know that the board and the plant commission requested that that sidewalk be moved, I believe, to the north, that was done. Um, they satisfied the conditions of the plant commission in terms of, uh, staking the line for the neighbors uh, and that sort of thing, so that there was, uh, no issues that were raised by the plant commission.
And does the, uh, now I don't know if this is you or Kevin, does the booster station up there need to be completed before the third subdivision?
The booster station is addressed in the, in the development agreement, and Kevin can probably talk better on the timing of that than I can.
Yeah, so that, there was a condition in the plant commission, um, the memo that I put together, that needs to be in operation before any occupancy permits are granted, you know, after the homes are actually up and running and constructed. Then is when that thing needs to be up and running.
So in this third, which is twenty lots, I guess, um, they can build, but no occupancy permits until that third is done. Is, and who's putting the booster in? Is that?
That, yeah. Derek, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what's spelt out in the development agreement also, there's
Okay.
language in there for it.
Okay, thanks, that's all I got.
Okay, then, uh, item C in the plant commission, Paul, is, uh, consideration of ordinance zero one dash is twenty twenty-one, amending chapter ninety-eight, zoning section ninety-eight, one twenty-seven, enforcement penalties, void permits, section ninety-eight, one five one, lower St. Croix Riverway zoning approval requested.
Stan, sorry to back, to back up, we, we actually need a motion and approval of the final plat. And then we also need approval of the developers agreement and be there.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Um, all right, so, uh, the motion on the final plat, uh, anybody got one?
Stan, could I move to approve the final, motion on the final plat?
Thank you Kirk, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Brian, uh, any further discussion in the final plat? Hearing none, all in favor of, uh, the motion as presented, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Developers agreement, uh?
Stan, could I move to approve the developers agreement?
Thank you Kirk, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Uh, questions, comment?
Now Kevin, Kevin, uh, and Melissa, you guys have been over this, it's pretty big, and this is good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both Melissa and myself are involved in the developers agreement, so I know I'm comfortable with the approval.
And I know I've asked this before, but Melissa, you're the one that's responsible for this agreement being followed?
Well, it's kind of a, a group effort, I would say.
Okay.
I, I look at dates and then follow up with Kevin usually, and, or Patrick even, and Paul, so it's kind of a group effort on everybody to, you know.
And the agreement provides for security to be in place, so, you know, if something does happen, the village is protected.
Okay. It just seemed like we lost track of that between Gloria and Melissa going for, uh, you know, switching spots there for a little while. And I was new to the board at the time, and I kept asking, who's, who's managing this thing?
For the ridges?
Yeah.
Oh, and that was from the first one, from, yeah, way back when, that was way before my time, so, yeah.
Okay, as long as we got that clear, I'm good.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now, item C is consideration of the ordinances, Paul?
Yep, and, and let me explain a little bit, um, Melissa and the chief and I looked at this, if you were in in the Riverway section of the zoning ordinance in the enforcement area, it references that penalties can be assessed pursuant to the ordinance, or the, the citation ordinance of the village. Well, lo and behold, we found out that there wasn't one that addressed this. So what these two amendments will do is, and I'm gonna need some input here, because if you look at them, there's a couple blanks in there. And that is to set some, uh, uh, penalties for any zoning violation. And that would include a Riverway ordinance violation, and so the original language in the Riverway zoning ordinance that referred to the ordinance, uh, fee schedule has been removed and just it just refers back to the overall penalty for the zoning ordinance provision. And so it was drafted with some blanks to get some input as to, there, there's two ways to go, you can put in a range or you can just decide on one, one amount, and I guess, you know, zoning violations vary, which is why I went with the, a minimum and a maximum. Uh, so I'm looking for some input from the board on that, what that range would be.
I think the minimum gotta be like, you know, really low, in case we're just wanting to slap somebody's hands, but I don't know how high to go on the other side.
What's typical of villages, and, I mean, I guess you said it's all over the board, but can you give us a little?
The other thing you have to remember is that these are potentially per day fines.
Oh.
So, you know, they can add up quickly.
Well, it doesn't say per day on C, does it?
Yep. Yep, if you read down the bottom, it, it'll talk about being per day.
Oh, I had sent you, uh, some numbers I had gotten from, uh, Brian Works Office, and do you have those handy of what the fines range from, from the different municipalities?
I, no, I don't here, no, I'm.
Okay, I'll, I'll try and find it.
Oh, we don't have a number to do any kind of approving just yet, right?
No, and, and the other thing to point out is because this is an amendment to the actual zoning ordinance, there's a separate process that has to take place, so you know, tonight, you know, if you recommend a, a number to fill in the blanks and you're okay with this uh, procedure, then this ordinance will have to go back to the plant commission for review and approval. And then there's gonna be a class two notice for a public hearing and then a final approval at the board level, because it is an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Well, we, we did something, um, you know, on the Rayleigh property a year ago, didn't we?
And that was, that was a daily fine, yeah.
Yes.
And that was a hundred, wasn't that like? I thought it was gonna be like a hundred, hundred bucks a day, so if we went one to one hundred, would that be sufficient in here?
I would. Yeah, I, you know, if you look at, you have a catch-all ordinance, um, that's essentially, I think that is from fifty to five hundred. So if nothing else applies, you know, you can fall back to that ordinance.
Well, let's do that.
And so, so you may wanna look at those.
Are you saying Tim just match that?
We'll fall back on the catch-all when it comes to a fine, I mean, then we can determine what we wanna apply to that after that, right Paul? Could be fifty, could be...
You can, but it, you know, if you wanted something specific for the zoning ordinance and a penalty for the zoning ordinance, then you know, you wanna plug in some numbers for those blanks. And I think that would be appropriate.
So I found some numbers that I had gotten from Brian Works Office, um, so for example, the town of Troy, and they have, um, a large uh, lower St. Croix Riverway zoning area, they do a minimum of two hundred dollars and a maximum of five thousand. That's probably because they're on the lower St. Croix Riverway, but then you get in town of Hudson and like, they do seventy-five to a hundred, or excuse me, seventy-five to five hundred. Hammond does ten up to two hundred. And then Somerset and Woodville, they get into first fi- you know, first offense, second fence, third offense fine, so it's kind of a range all over the place, so.
Yep, and I, and I can comment on the Troy, because I'm on the plant commission there and have dealt with the Riverway for years. Um, and those numbers I think are higher, just because of the income level the people that live on the Riverway down there to have some sort of a deterrent factor, because otherwise they just don't care. And I don't know if that's the case in North Hudson at all, but, you know, that's up to you to set the fines. And again, they're, they're per day, so they do add up.
Well, so if, if there's this fallback, if we do something different than the fallback, are we gonna get grief about about that?
No, no, I mean, this will, this will be specific for the zoning ordinance.
Zoning, okay.
You know, it'll only apply to the zone, and that's the entire zoning chap.
I'm, I don't know about the rest.
Not just the Riverway.
I'm still thinking for people that make I'm still thinking for people that make mistakes and, you know, I still would like a low number on the bottom. Who who warns them when they make these mistakes? How do we know they make them?
The enforcement comes from, you know, a building inspector. Typically, the enforcement comes from a neighbor complaint, to be honest with. Okay, otherwise, you know, I mean, the chief's not driving around looking for zoning ordinance violations. You know, um, it typically comes from the building inspector or one of you folks that, you know, that live there and noticed something. Um, but I, you know, I would agree that, you know, there's different levels of of zoning issues, whether it's, you know, a fence problem or you know, who knows what signage problems or whatever versus, you know, some something more significant. So that's what's nice about the range.
So the building, I mean, the our neighbor could contact the building inspector, and the building inspector would go out and look at it.
Yep, that's usually what happens.
And then the fine starts when the building inspector says, okay, you're in violation? Is that how it works?
Usually what will happen is that the building inspector will contact that person and say, you know, you're in violation. Will you voluntarily comply?
Right.
That's the first step. And if they blow them off, if they don't do anything, then you move to the next step. And that's a citation level. And if that doesn't get their attention, then you move on to a, you know, a court case and an injunction situation to force them to comply.
So the citation level is when they would actually hear the fine that they're facing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But then I think that gets to your point, Brian. I mean, they get a shot to fix it.
Right.
Voluntary comply, so I think the fine could start at seventy-five or something more substantial.
Okay, yeah, I I knowing the steps that are involved, that makes more sense, too. And then thinking about the riverway, I mean, they could do some real damage over there if we don't have a stiff enough top end on this to really motivate them.
So Melissa, Melissa, that five thousand on the high end, is that not to exceed five thousand, or that could potentially be five thousand a day for Troy?
Um, Paul may be able to answer that better. Paul, is that a five thousand a day or is that?
Usually what Troy does would just set a number.
They don't do a day per day?
Yeah, and and not per day, no. You know, usually people are coming in with an after-the-fact permit for something that they've done, and as part of that process, then Troy will assess a fine. Right now, Troy gave that up and the county's doing it, so.
Really?
Make a motion, Kathy, Brian.
I, I, well, seventy-five and we know that hundred moved, but seventy-five and two hundred, if this is a daily cost, if they don't move fast on two hundred, that's gonna add up pretty fast.
I would go even more than two hundred. Think of the people that, yeah, that live on Gala Head or just in general.
I'm open.
I would do, I would do seventy-five to a thousand.
I'm with Kirk.
Okay, who's gonna make the motion?
Go ahead.
I move to uh set the sign or the fee assessments between seventy-five, not the minimum of seventy-five and not to exceed five thousand. Was it, oh, sorry, was it a thousand? Oh, sorry, I had Troy in my mind, one thousand.
Second.
Okay, further discussion.
So just so just so everybody knows, you know, what'll happen now is I'll plug those numbers into that ordinance, and you'll have to go back to the Plan Commission and go through this process before it's enacted.
Okay, so we're not really voting on this particular ordinance?
Another shot at it coming out of the Plan Commission then.
Yeah. Yeah, there's ordinance number here, so, okay. Cool. Do we have to vote on that?
Well, I would guess so.
Okay.
And does it need to be roll call or can I just go with the all in favor of?
Yeah, all in favor is fine.
Okay, uh, that said, all in favor of the uh of uh motion and the fines or or the assessments, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, that would bring us to item D, which is possible fines for tree cutting in relation to conditional use permit.
Did I miss one? Did we do C?
That was
I think there's like two Cs on the agenda.
Oh.
Paul would apply to both?
Number two.
So there's no blank, there's no blank lines on C, Paul, right?
No, there there's only blanks in one of them.
Okay, so all right, so we took care of both. Okay, gotcha. Sorry, Stan.
Oh, that's all right. Believe me, I, you know, I appreciate all your input because I've been known and have a history of missing stuff. Okay, so that said, we'll go on to D then, which is a possible fines for tree cutting in relation to conditional use permit at two twenty-two Summers Landing Road North, discussion possible act approval.
So if I can step in again, so because you know, we had some issues with the zoning ordinance and the penalties, so really your only option right now is to revert back to that general catch-all ordinance. And that's five to fifty to five hundred, I believe, and I knew you're I was gonna print it out before I left and I forgot to do it, so I'd have it here, but um, but that's the only really one that's available right now. Um, you couldn't go through the process and pass the zoning ordinance and then retroactively apply it to this person. That, you know, people frowned on that, but you do have the catch-all ordinance available if you want to go down that road. Um, and that is something, you know, that you could vote on. Um, if you do want to assess that penalty, then, you know, that would be enforced. Uh, we'd file something with the municipal court to try to enforce that.
Can you fill in a little bit of what happened?
Of what?
Oh, Kirk wasn't
Kirk wasn't at that meeting.
Oh, well. And I I'll try. Um, there's a couple different sides, but, you know, when this was brought up to the Plan Commission, um, it was pointed out that prior to the issuance of the conditional use permit, the applicant cut their swath for their lift down down the hill to the river before they had any approvals, and that was pointed out to the applicant. Um, their response was that they talked to someone at the village, and I think it was the Public Works Director. Uh, that was the name that was mentioned anyway, so she thought she had permission. Um, you know, that's where it gets a little ambiguous as to what was said, but, you know, clearly the contractor is experienced in the riverway, should have known better. Um, the applicant seemed to be a little confused. I mean, she didn't really even know what municipality she lived in. Um, she tried to apply to the city of Hudson for this permit originally. So she was confused. Um, so I don't know. I mean, obviously, it's the responsibility of the applicant to know the rules and to follow the rules. And she didn't. She cut the path for the lift before any permits were issued. Ultimately, you know, she increased her application up to a level that was acceptable. She put in a uh revegetation plan, which was appropriate, and her conditional use permit was approved. She just jumped the gun. There's the history.
Okay, that good enough for Kirk? You got up to speed now? And at the la- the last meeting, I, you know, that we had and discussed this, you know, I was hoping that, you know, I mean, because obviously we were, we we had talked about having, uh, you know, some kind of a uh mailing or whatever to go out and uh to all the, you know, residents along there or wherever, and I'm not really sure what, you know, we'd actually do with that, but or how that would work. But, you know, offered to say, hey, if you want to cover postage and and the time put into that, you know, we would, uh, that would be, we could do that in lieu of or instead of fines or whatever, but uh she didn't really have any interest in that either. So I don't think we have any other recourse other than, you know, we gotta do, you know, some kind, there should be some kind of penalty for not doing due diligence, I think.
Um, yeah, but I remember her saying she was, you know, if if I'm in her shoes, I would think that my contractor would know what they were doing. But so I kind of sympathize with her there, but nevertheless, it's, it is what it is, and the ordinance is an ordinance, and the rules are the rules, but she found out the hard way.
It was a he said, she said kind of situation.
There was some of that, you know, and and under the ordinance, you can find not only the applicant, but you can find the contract. Yeah, we talked about that.
They didn't really want to find him. He said he knew, he said he knew the rule, and yeah, he's done work down there before, and
Yet he still did it.
Well, because he was told he had an okay to do it. And I'm pretty sure that wasn't from Patrick. I don't know.
Patrick, you got any input?
There was a, there was I don't know how to put it. It it it, there was, there was some misleading things, I guess. And it was confusing and um rather than all three of us getting together and figuring something out, it was a, you know, um, one person called another person, and then there was a conversation, and then said person called the other person, and there was a conversation there. It just, it was very confusing and, yeah, I don't, I don't know that I can add a whole lot of insight to it. It just, um, I know that I've had a relationship with Scott since I started here. It's not been a very long time, but I have not ever known him to do something that is wrong or even close to wrong. He's very by-the-book guy, so, um, that's my two cents, I guess.
You know, I guess, you know, from what was actually done, I don't think they overcut what would have been approved in the end. You know, they didn't clear cut twenty-five feet when they only needed eight feet or whatever. Um, but they jumped the gun.
And Kirk, to update you, they do, Melissa and 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 just have a process in place now to to handle this going forward, so that we came out of that meeting, so.
Yeah, I'm just always a little nervous to allow it to go without a fine or something like that, because the next person's gonna go, well, I didn't know, so I'm always super nervous of letting it go for not knowing. We're starting a a trend that I'm not, I don't want to.
Does that go along with ignorance of the law or is there's no excuse?
Yeah, Chief, Chief's second applied to us, next ticket.
Well, I I'll move to um apply the catch-all fee that we have currently in place against us, if that's fine.
For what?
Their number?
Well, it's the fifty to a hundred, right, Paul, if we have in place?
No, I think it's fifty to five hundred.
Fifty to five hundred, okay.
Good question. Sorry about that. Maybe maybe we should, I'll second your motion, and then I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so what date are we choosing to start this from?
That's the next question I was gonna ask. When do you start applying that, Paul?
Well, the, you know, the permit was issued, and, you know, the mitigation for it was approved. So, you know, I don't think a daily fine is is applicable in this case. I would set it as a is a one-time fine. And that being said, you know, you may want to look at the upper end of that scale because of that.
Paul, a quick question for you. When you were referencing the penalty section, were you talking about one dash eleven? Is that the one you referenced?
Yep.
First offense penalty for that is five dollars and no more than five hundred. I just looked it up.
Okay, okay, there we go.
And and it's not a daily thing, Chief? It's just a set fee? In that case?
I didn't read that yet. Let me check.
Yeah.
Under the section one dash eleven, uh, general penalties, it does call out first offense penalty, then second offense penalty. So I do not believe, I I guess it could be per day, but uh it, I think there would probably have to be some timeframe in between first and second offenses.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So coming out of the last meeting, though, we weren't quite sure how it would apply to our current ordinance, right? You know, what fines would be? That was really the ultimate question. And Chief, you're gonna, right, you talked about taking it away and to find out how it's gonna be applied. In the eleven dash one, you just talked about where you guys determined it to be sufficient, right?
It's, yeah, it's one dash eleven, and at the last meeting, my position was that we didn't have a procedure that I was aware of, and we weren't sure which department would be in charge of moving forward on that, and that's really where these new ordinances they looked at tonight come in and and really putting the onus on the building inspector and the zoning administrator versus the police department or the adminis- the village administrator. Um, but this, as Paul mentioned, is is had been in place, and it is a a resolution to violations of the zoning ordinance because it is, uh, it basically encompasses a violation of any of our ordinances and puts that range in place.
Well, then I amend my motion because the fact is we already have something in place, correct? Okay. And now we determine the amount, correct?
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Make it.
But I think, I think your motion should include the number, and then either people prove it at that number or it goes down, and then somebody picks a new number, would be my position on the procedure for that.
Phil?
Uh, move to make the fine two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Thank you. And now for their discussion. Hearing none, I think we'll do a roll call on this, uh.
I do have a quick question. Is the fine just on the property owner then?
Correct.
Is that?
Yes.
Two 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 Summers Landing Road North.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, Tim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lori?
I think she said yes.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, you're not, it's a, I didn't see the, and I will make it unanimous and say yes. Thank you for the a good, really good discussion, and, you know, hopefully clearing up for the next uh group that has to deal with something like this. Okay, item eight is Personnel and Finance Committee recommendations, claims and approval requested.
Uh, Stan, can I move to recommend the board to approve the December twenty twenty-nine recurring claims of three hundred and forty-four dollars in the March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, non-recurring claims of sixty-two thousand twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, discussion. Hearing none, uh, Lori? Yes? Kathy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
And I'll also say yes. Thank you very much. Next item in the Personnel and Finance is wage for municipal court position, discussion approval request.
Stan, I so moved to set the pay for our municipal court clerk position at a range to be between sixteen fifty to seventeen dollars an hour.
You, Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion. Melissa, background or anything, uh, or how you come up with these numbers?
Um, on the memo that's included there, um, if you kind of compare us to Baldwin, which is the same size, um, they're starting their new clerk at sixteen dollars an hour, so I kind of went from there and um, size of the municipality and duties um, compared to that.
Yeah, thank you for the job description, Melissa. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, wages spending, Tim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Public Works Chair Update. Brian?
Dan, we did meet. We've got one item to bring forward. Um, we are recommending an increase in the ERU rate from seven dollars to nine dollars per ERU to support the two fifteen storm water utility fund.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second? Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Phil. Uh, discussion?
Can you give some background, Brian, please?
Well, we have the, the original rate that we set was in twenty eleven for the ERUs. And the ERUs help us do our stormwater basins. That's one item coming out of the two fifteen fund. And we've only been able to do, what, Patrick, how many a year so far?
Five to seven.
So we're, you know, we had, I think we've got three hundred or something and we're. We realized if we don't up, up this a little bit, it's gonna take forty or fifty years to get them done. And, uh, sealing them last for a good twenty years. So we're trying to do them a little quicker. That's one of the main reasons for this increase.
And I think areas around this are higher, I'm pretty sure than the.
Yeah.
Than that number, so.
I forget Hudson, I think is at eleven or fourteen. I can't remember, one of the two.
No, and that's, uh, yeah, I mean, I'd think it's a good, uh, a decent increase. I mean, it isn't gonna sting too bad if. That's quarterly, I believe, isn't it?
It's quarterly.
Yep. And we did hold a, uh, we did hold a, uh, what do you call those meetings? Uh, public, uh.
Public hearing.
Public hearing at our last, uh, Public Works meeting and no one showed up.
And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Tim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And yes, thank you.
So Melissa, what are next steps to actually implement that? Just curious.
Well, I'll reach out to Chrissy at the city. Um, and notify her of the change. And hopefully get a response. Start there.
Okay. Will you inform the board when this has actually been put in place, please? By the, by the ci- by the city, I mean. And Stan, the only other thing I have from Public Works is I would. It, I would generally ask Kevin for, uh, thirty-five update unless, Tim, are you gonna cover that?
No, I'm not gonna say much because not much activity's happened. Kevin just kind of gave the quick brief update prior to that and that's about the same consistent what I've been getting back from, from DOT, so.
So anybody got any questions on the thirty-five project for Kevin? It's still looking like May first and it might be later from what we heard today. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, next is public safety, Tim.
Stan, we did meet. Um, I want to again, um, thank Kathy Lee for her use of service on the Public Safety Committee. Um, I certainly appreciate all of your input. Uh, we have nothing else to carry forward at this time.
Thank you, uh, public welfare, Kirk?
Uh, nothing to bring. The same thing with parks.
Okay, thank you. And so that would bring us to. Item thirteen, which is the board may convene into closed session pursuant to statute nineteen point eight five. Period one, period lower cat case E to deliberate or negotiate. The purp- purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to water and sewer ad hoc committee updates. Is there a motion?
I moved.
So moved.
Oh, you got you just by half a, half a sentence.
I can't get correct. You gotta get.
Then I second, I second.
All right, thank you. And, uh, I know we've got a vote on that, so all in favor of going into closed session, signal, I was saying aye.
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 Aye, uh, opposed. Thank you, uh, Chief. Okay, I would just, uh, the last item on the, uh. Before I say adjournment is that, you know, Brian said this was gonna be a short meeting, so anything, you know, we're over by normal limits. So, uh, thank you, Brian. It, we want to have that happen again. And I'll declare, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at eight oh two.
Nate's thanking us too, by the way.
Thanks Kathy and Lori.
Yeah, we'll see you around. It's not like I'm moving. See you later. Bye bye.
Thank you.